I'd seen that our six of you haven't arrived, I'll call the March 7th council meeting to order, roll call, Michelle.
Wellness, Langness, Grady, Bini, Gadle, Singer, Allen.
Here. I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right, next up we have the consent agenda, is there anything anybody would like to add or remove at this time? Or is there any action on it as printed?
Second.
All right, it's moved to second to approve the consent agenda, Michelle, would you please read?
Approval of the council minutes of February 23rd, 2017, approval of payment of invoices processed through March 1st, 2017, and acknowledgement of receipt and filing of the library board minutes of December 19th, 2016, and the Irvin L. Young Memorial Library annual report for 2016.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, roll call, Michelle.
Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Bini.
Aye.
Gadle.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
All right, motion passed, move on to our next item, which is city manager update, Cameron.
All right, first thing I'm going to do is provide to all of council members the material that I received from Windalong with the Whitewater Arts Alliance, I'm not going to go over it, but this is just some information regarding events scheduled for the coming year, and I have my own notes to provide to the clerk for the record, so I'll hold on to those, Michelle, and we can go through those later. But I wanted to give that out, and tonight, we have ordered our new projector, but our projector is not yet, is not yet available, so this is just going to be my, my review of just some things that are worth mentioning. So, first is regarding recruitments for the city of Whitewater, and I've been keeping everyone updated on this because we have so many at the moment, but the Whitewater Water Division or Water Utility within Public Works, today we concluded interviews, and there are two individuals that will be receiving offers of employment tomorrow based on background checks and, and feedback we've received from references, so that will hopefully be filled in the very near future. Parks and Recreation Director is still underway, two Park and Rec Board members will be invited to participate in Skype interviews, the phone interviews will end on the 8th of this month, and then we'll do the planning for those Skype interviews, and with this and with other director positions, I know I've mentioned before, but if anyone has an interest in participating, please, please get ahold of me and let me know, because we like to have council members on those, those interview panels as well. The Finance Administrative Services Director, we will have face-to-face via Skype interviews on Wednesday, March 15th, and those will be happening from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we have four candidates that pass through phone screens and look to be of, worthy of consideration for the position, so that is where we are with that recruitment. The CDA Director also will have Skype interviews, face-to-face through Skype, occurring in the near future, I believe it is still March 20th, but I am not sure, so I'll just say that it's coming in the next couple of weeks of March. And then also, currently, we have a recruitment underway for an administrative assistant position with the fire department, that we're helping with, with that. So, anyone listening that's interested can go to our website, look through under Government on the Employment line, click on Employment, and there'll be applications or the application software access point there to learn more about the positions and apply. Okay, so, the other item I wanted to mention for the, just for the benefit of the community and the council is we have, with the hiring of our Public Relations and Communications Manager, we have now someone that has been regularly putting out material, so if you have been, if you've liked our Facebook page, or have otherwise signed up for RSS feeds from the website, that's great, if you haven't, you might want to, because a lot of information comes out every week on relevant, relevant projects and happenings in the community through those, those media sources from our Public Relations and Communications Manager. I would also point out that on the 1st of March, she interviewed on WJBL, WCLO, and then she will be also again with, in addition to Mark Johnson from the Innovation Center, be interviewing on WFAW this Thursday at 9:00 AM to talk about the Certified Sites Program, and as well to talk about the, the Innovation Center and things going on there, to provide the community with that information. Also, relevant for the council to know about is Polco, while we, we're still working on the preparations for an official onboard or going live of Polco, today, a, one very minor survey without much pomp or announcement was provided through our website, just to see what type of reception it would receive, we, in five minutes, there were two responses, in an hour and a half, there were two, there were 327, and then in four, five hours, we had 988 participants that either viewed and/or voted on, on the question that was out there, and the question was, would you support shopping at a community-based grocery store without being required to be a member? So, that was the question that, that ultimately went out today. Just a few other announcements that I would like to share would be, Wellfest is coming on Sunday, March 12th, that's, that event is sponsored by W3, it will be held at the Whitewater High School from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. On St. Patrick's Day at noon, there will be an event to celebrate St. Patrick's Day at the Sterren Park Community Building, so residents would be invited to attend that as well, just contact our senior, senior coordinator, Deb Weber-Paul, for that informa, for more information. Basketball tournaments have concluded, baseball tournaments will start in April, so be looking now to those sports enthusiasts that want to be involved, we have those, we have tournaments beginning of baseball in April. Also, our Public Works crews, especially the Streets Parks Forestry, folks have been taking care of potholes, you might see them around town doing their seasonal pothole repairs. If we had the screen, I'd show you the great picture I have here of a car in a sinkhole, but alas, we don't, so just know that we're out doing that work, and so if you see a crew out in the street, that's, that's what they're working on. Also, downtown, we, we continue to encourage, and downtown Whitewater also is encouraging parklets, to businesses interested in expanding their outdoor space to take advantage of or learn more about parklets, they originated on the West Coast in 2008, but since that time, the city of Whitewater has adopted code or rules regarding what a parklet would look like and to be established, but essentially, it's establishing additional pedestrian space in what would equate to a parking stall immediately adjacent to the curb in front of a local business. So, businesses wanting space, more space for their customers outdoors can look to the city or contact Courtney Nelson with downtown Whitewater to get more information about how they might go about constructing or obtaining a parklet. And then, lastly, wanted to let everyone know that in addition to other fitness services and programs that are available, the Whitewater Aquatic Center has added massage therapy to the list of services, so if you're interested in, in taking advantage of that service, feeling a little bit stressed and need to have, have a massage, contact the fitness center at 473-4900 to make an appointment. That is everything I wanted to share, all right, so if you have any questions, let me know, otherwise, I've concluded.
All right, next up, we have hearing of citizen comments, no formal council action will be taken during this meeting, although issues raised may become part of a future agenda, participants are allowed a three-minute speaking period, and although specific items listed on the agenda may not be discussed at this time, we definitely allow for public input when those items come up for debate. So, if there's anything not on the agenda, anybody wish to speak on, just come up to the table and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our next order of business, which is ordinance's second reading, and the only item there is O1, adopting a change of the district zoning map for the following parcels to enact an ordinance to impose the R3A, University Residential Overlay District Zoning Classification, under Chapter 19.22 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Whitewater, and this would be for properties on West Sterren Road, North Prince Street, and portions of properties on North Trap.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved to second to approve, is there any further discussion?
Should we ask for public comment?
Is anybody in the public? All right, seeing none, roll call, Michelle.
Grady.
Aye.
Bini.
Aye.
Gadle.
abstain.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Langness.
Aye.
All right, motion passed, move on to considerations, first up is C1, approval of change order number six for wastewater treatment plant biological upgrade in the amount of $13,970.58.
And I just introduce Tim Reel, our wastewater treatment superintendent, will be kind of heading up on this item tonight, and he has brought representation as well from Donahue and Associates, the engineering firm we're working with for managing and overseeing construction of the project.
You're good, thank you, Cameron. Good evening, everyone, just a real quick brief update, the project is progressing very nicely, the mild weather is treated as well, and we're certainly looking forward to a very busy year for us at the treatment plant. As Cameron stated, in front of you tonight is change order number six, and you will probably also found in the front of your change order packets, in the front, there is an attachment A, which provides a brief description and explanation of each of the items that are included in the change order this evening. Also of note, items one and two on that list are partially completed at this time, while items four and five have been completed in the interest of maintaining construction progress. The remaining items have not been started at this time. I wanted to briefly touch on these for a matter of record and for those watching at home, so a quick touch on each one of these items. Item number one involves necessary building modifications that we were made aware of after state review of the drawings, those items include plumbing, HVAC, and structural items at the plant, most costs were incurred due to some plumbing modifications that were required as part of this project. Item number two involves the installation of a concrete transformer pad and some guard posts in Structure 120, which is our vehicle storage building, the transformer pad will obviously elevate the transformer, which will protect that from moisture concerns, and the guard posts are being installed to protect against any potential vehicle damage or any other striking of any of the other electrical gear in that area. Item number three involves some boiler feedwater changes to both new boilers in the digister building and existing, and an existing boiler, currently, we feed actually our affluent as makeup water for our boiler system, and after some discussion, this was, it was highly recommended that we change that practice due to the plant affluent could contain debris which would prematurely foul and cause maintenance concerns with our boilers, and so this would be a change to using potable water for that, which in our case would be actually our well water, so this involves the plumbing changes on that item. Item four is, involves installation of more removable handrail sections on our aeration basin, and that would increase the ease and safety when we do necessary maintenance on equipment that will be located there. Item five involves a unit heater removal in that digister building, this item was missed during drawing review, and it is partially in the way of a future door opening, so that takes care of that item. Item six is a window infill in the digister building, this in an area where we're going to be placing our new transformer to be located, the current window in this location is actually a overhung window, and it's commonly used when weather permits to allow fresh air into the building, however, we're concerned about moisture getting onto that transformer, so we looked at options, two options we looked at were to actually fill that area in with block and brick, and the second option was to actually just put a solid window pane in that area, the least cost alternative was the window infill, and that's what is in front of you is item six. Item seven involves an upgrade to more stout lentils or metal that will span some openings where we're going to be placing some louvers in the main control building, and this is an upgrade from a standard lentil to a more stout metal lentil that will better carry the load in this load-bearing wall. The, the total cost for those seven items in change order is $13,970.58, and that leaves our contingency balance at $1,136,795.35. If there's any questions or on these details, Donahue is here that can answer any questions.
Thanks, Tim, I move C1.
Second.
So, on a second, is there any questions for Tim or Donahue?
Thank you.
Is anybody in the public? Seeing none, we'll, we'll call Michelle.
Bini.
Aye.
Gadle.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
All right, motion passed, and move on to.
Patrick, if I could just comment, this particular group, to me seemed so non-controversial and so relatively limited in cost compared with the scope of the whole project, I really wondered whether it was necessary for us to require the Donahue folks to be here, it's kind of you to do so, but I assume we're probably running up the meter, no, you're doing it gratis, well, that's awfully kind of you. I mean, really, if, if we even felt it was necessary for you to be available on phone, I think that would be quite adequate for this scope of change order, and in reality, looking at the procurement policy, it appears to me that the department head has the authority to approve a change order up to $10,000 on a construction project, so if a smaller number of these had been included in one change order, actually, it appears to me, it could have been done without even coming to council for approval, but just notification.
Yeah, these, I appreciate that, and these do come in, you know, sporadically, change orders and the size of these, you know, we sometimes don't have control on that, we really wanted to bring that forward as a matter of, you know, informing the council on what's going on, and make sure that we allow, you know, if there's any questions at this time as well. And certainly, if there's direction to do that, we, there was an opportunity, some of these change orders sat there, there would have certainly been less than 10,000, the reason why we kind of came today, you know, we could have waited, you know, but there's some need for approval for contractors on some of these items, so they were waiting for council approval on some items.
Since my memory isn't very good, what's the completion date, more or less?
Per the specifications, the completion date is not until May 1st of 2018, but.
So, another year.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, I was just going to add to the comment council member Bini has made, just before you'd said something, I made the note to have the conversation at staff level, so, to the same effect, so.
Any other comments? All right, thank you. Our next, we'll move to C2, authorization to purchase squad car for police department.
Yep, I can start us off while the chief comes forward to get ready, so, this is an item that has, was included in our, in our 2017 municipal budget, included was the purchase of an additional vehicle for the, a squad for the police department, we have a rotation for police vehicles, given the wear on the vehicle, over time, they're, they're often, they're out, of course, without a, without a garage, they're out 24/7 in the weather, but then, we have to leave them running at times and just really hard on the engine, so we have a, we have a rotation plan that is set up, and as a result of that plan, this particular purchase is coming forward and was included in the budget document, so with that, I'll let the chief provide any additional details, so, about the item, if there are any.
Nothing beyond the memo, if there's any questions, we're certainly happy to answer them, it's the standard purchase every year.
I move C2 that we purchased the vehicle for $28,100.
Second. Since it's always a conundrum in terms of whether to make a purchase from a local vendor versus someone out of town when there's a price difference, I thought it best to do a little bit of a review of conversations that we've had over the years and decisions that we've made, specifically, I really thought we had perhaps adopted a policy about a percentage that would be allowed for a local purchase, so to just quickly highlight what I found over the past number of years, in 2011, and it might be noted, the motion, as I understand it, was to go with Ewald, which, their bid was over $1,000 less than the local vendor, and certainly germane to that is the fact that Ewald has a state contract that allows them to do some very attractive pricing. So, back in 2011, Ewald was granted a purchase when they came in at $957 lower than the local vendor, 3.9%, I believe that it was a result of that purchase that council member Jim Olson stated that he believed that a number of years previous, there'd been a policy that if a local bid was within 5% of the cost of the lowest bid, the council could choose to buy local, he then noted that the policy that was written in 2007 did not include anything on that, and I think that might be this procurement policy that's currently in effect. There then was discussion about whether to adopt such a policy, and in fact, it was indicated the city attorney and city manager would bring back a proposal, but I could not find that that ever came back to council, does anybody else know that it ever came back? I looked through all of 2012, and I think probably all of 2013.
I have a vague recollection of, of working on it, but just don't recall it ever coming to the council, so, I could check on that.
So, then, the next year, 2013, there was another purchase, in that case, Ketterhagen came in just 1.5% above Ewald, and that purchase was made from the local vendor. Following year, 14, the K-9 vehicle, the local vendor again was almost $1,000 higher in this case than Havel Spurle, the motion was made to purchase from the out-of-town vendor, however, that was a really strange evening, motion was approved to purchase from the out-of-town vendor, but then a citizen offered to the chief a $1,000 donation to the K-9 fund if the local vendor would be approved, which then occurred. Now, on this occasion, we're back to a very similar increase from the local vendor of 3.8%, which has occurred three times, there was only one time when the local vendor came in at 1.5% higher. I'd like to support the local vendor, but I have to say, in this case, over $1,000 difference, 3.8% seems fairly significant, and the thing that's really strange, of course, my understanding is with auto dealers, there can be various rebates that aren't reflected on a bid, but if you just look at the bid itself, it shows a 1.5% markup for $431, so just going on what we're provided on paper, it's as though we'd be paying $1,000 more to give a $430 markup to the local vendor, which doesn't seem to make sense, so unfortunately, I have to support the motion as it was given.
Having, having been through this in the past, we, I'm sure we'd all like to support our local vendor, but we've been told by legal counsel in the past that the bids being the same, we are obligated by law to go with the lowest bid, secondly, I would just like to remind people that the money made on the sale of the car isn't that significant, where the money will be made would be by Ketterhagen on the warranty work.
They're very good about doing all of our warranty work, they do a very good quality job.
Counsel, I don't recall that you've exactly given that position, have you?
That's, I think that, just a distinction there, on public works, that's an absolute, on, on acquisition of property like this, there, the council does have different discretion, so, they could, you could go in for a higher bid, you just explain why, it has to be a rational basis for it.
Is there any?
And when I say public works, public bidding is what, it's an absolute requirement to take the low bid, low qualified bidder.
And not, I'm not trying to contradict Wally, it was a different city attorney at that time.
Oh, thank you.
Well, then.
Was that a Marquette grad?
So, the motion is to approve the purchase through Ewald Automotive in the amount of $28,100.
Aye.
Singer.
Aye.
Allen.
Aye.
Langness.
Aye.
Grady.
Aye.
Bini.
Aye.
All right, next, we move to C3, discussion regarding public safety precautions being taken for anticipated events occurring the weekend of April 29th, 2017.
Thank you, so, we've had lengthy discussion regarding events that will and will not occur that weekend, I want to focus now on not any specific event, and certainly none, there's, there is not one specific event that we could mention by name, but we anticipate that there, that as is tradition, that weekend will be an active weekend for a variety of reasons for a lot of our residents to be having celebrations at, and gatherings at their, at their homes, whether they be throughout the day, Saturday, or whether they be Saturday afternoon, evening, or whether they be Saturday night through to Sunday morning. So, in anticipation of that, that occurrence or the happening of a large number of celebrations and gatherings which could draw a large number of visitors to the community from outside of Whitewater, we have been actively looking at ways to ensure public safety throughout the, the weekend. Chief Adabacher just had us, had and passed out for everyone a list of things, happenings associated with preparation, meetings and events associated with preparation for that weekend, and I would just like to add in addition prior to her talking about that list, because we anticipate a lot of gatherings and a large number of visitors to the community, the city staff outside of just the police department, we've been working and will continue to make connections with our fire inspectors to make sure they are available during that weekend to assist with safety measures when, when and if homes or rented homes or owned homes regardless are occupied with a large number of visitors, more than can be legally or safely allowed on the site, to have the, have fire inspectors available to assist in making that distinction and assisting in, in, in any action that needs to be taken at that point to keep everyone safe. Our staff will also be providing, preparing letters and providing letters, a letter to the community, to community members, whether you rent a space or own a space, absolutely all city residents will be receiving a letter explaining just what that the city anticipates there to be a lot of activity that weekend, and recommendations for folks that want to be involved and recommendations for folks that don't, and, and what this, also, a little bit about what the city is doing to prepare, the week, or 17th through 19th of April, or before, there will also be in certain select areas in the community a door-to-door campaign, providing information to residents in those areas about how to gather and have parties, have safe parties, and what to do if, if you have a concern about parties that your neighbors are having. We will also be providing the letter and any other materials that are shared with all or part of the community via our website and social media, I'm also looking at preparation of some video clips that will be provided as well through our media services folks to help everyone understand what's going on with that weekend or, or how to be safe. In addition to all of that, we will also provide an FAQ page, I failed to mention that with our website, that talks about, just FAQs about anything and everything that could potentially come up for the April 29th weekend, so, that's what I wanted to. So that's what I wanted to share, that the city is doing outside of anything that involves public safety personnel. And for discussion from our, on public safety personnel, I turn the time to our chief, Lisa Adabacher.
Thank you. We thought it'd be easier for you to get kind of a global understanding of what we've been doing. I'm certainly not going to read the entire document, but I thought it was a good reference in case you had a few questions about something that I might highlight. We've started meeting back in May, 19th, May 19th, 2016, where we kind of added on to the ad hoc committee meeting that was originally created based on some of the concerns regarding move-in. And so after the spring splash event, we met on May 19th. Several more meetings, updates on the ad hoc committee. Our first public safety meeting was on January 18th. This was part of the ad hoc that we meet with local law enforcement and our law enforcement partners. So our first official meeting was on the 18th. Then we met again at our second meeting on February 14th, again, just kind of talking about resources, plans, contingency plans, those type of things. February 23rd, we went with Walworth County Human Services and the Whitewater Rescue Squad. One of the big concerns we've always had the last couple of years is what to, how to assist and manage highly intoxicated people that are unable to care for themselves. So we were very pleased that Walworth County Human Services is willing to partner with us, as well as the Rescue Squad, so we don't have to transport people to actually down to Elkhorn, which is where Human Services is located, where we traditionally transport people for protective custody issues. So we believe that will be a very, a much better way to manage it. Most of these people have people that care for them, they just have gotten separated or lost, and so having a local place in town will help to make sure that those people are reconnected and reified with the people that will care for them, so that we don't have to put them down in a detox center, which is our preference not to do that. We met on March 1st with UW faculty and student leadership, just having some discussions about how the university is going to handle student housing, some of the partnerships they're working on, some of the messages that they're going to be sharing, unsafe gatherings, some of those issues and stuff like that, just a proactive partnership. I'll let Jim talk a little bit more about that, if that's okay. Then we've been in contact with the president of the Landlords Association, Bob Firemuth. He is hoping to coordinate a meeting with the group on the beginning of April, and then they have their regular scheduled meeting on April 24th. We'll do another follow-up with that. Some of our law enforcement partners that we have secured, we have a third meeting coming up in April, the beginning of April. These partnerships include obviously the City of Whitewater Police Department, UW Police Services, Walworth County Deputies, as well as JCECs, Walworth County Sheriff's Office, Wisconsin State Patrol, two local municipalities that are going to assist, Walworth County Human Services, Whitewater Rescue Squad, Neighborhood Services. And again, in the event that things really become in an unsafe venue, we have the opportunity that we can activate SMART. That was an MOU that the city council agreed to a couple of years ago. It's a law enforcement network group, similar to the fire department, where you ask for additional mutual aids as needed. Some community members have asked how they could be active in this, as well as some of our leadership partners with the university's student leadership individuals. And some of the things that we're recommending at least first blush is just be ambassadors, be safety ambassadors, be ambassadors to help make wise choices, to redirect people if they are making poor choices, to report public safety concerns, where to funnel highly intoxicated people, if people aren't sure where to find people, so that they know where the armory is going to be, our designated area. So just helping to keep people safe. I think that that's the best way that I think our student leaders, as well as our community members, can keep this event safe, and that's what I think everybody desires. We're going to kind of have two stations. One will be at the Whitewater Police Department, the other place will be the armory again to help facilitate for people that aren't able to care for themselves. We have some tactical equipment that will be available to us. And lastly, just confirming with Sidmick, our insurance carrier, that we are accountable for financial expenses, as well as any liability issues that come with a mutual aid. So Jim, do you want to?
Partnership? So a couple of things that you saw in the chief's overview is that obviously, University Housing is taking some proactive communications with the residents that live in our residence halls. Student Government, along with the Greek community, have already started to secure almost 100 volunteers that will go out Saturday afternoon and go out Sunday morning, coordinated with the chief that we want to make sure that everything is good to go and back to normal by noon. So they'll continue to coordinate those students who are interested in providing their services that way as a volunteer opportunity on Saturday and Sunday. And creating some messaging from our dean of students to talk about what is a good neighbor and what to do, how to call and contact and get help when that's necessary. And then, you know, obviously, as an institution, we're a big supporter of the non-academic misconduct policy, which is Chapter 17, which basically states if you break the law, local, state, federal law, that it can be addressed on campus and your status as a student. And that's true 365 days, not just one day in April. And so those are some more pieces of information that reminders will go out, as they often do every semester, about that chapter of state statute, so.
And just, we do this every year at move-in, we provide a brochure about how to have safe in legal, social gatherings. So in that door-to-door initiative, that's another item we will re-deliver, so that people understand that we want people to be safe and make safe choices, and legal choices.
Are there any questions for?
In the theme of keeping people safe, I was wondering if we need to do any inspections in the local area where this, most of the activities happen, about balconies and, you know, overloading of balconies? Is there, you know, we don't want an occurrence like that to happen?
We don't. That's the meeting that we had this past week with Cameron and Wally and Chris Muntz-Pritchard for that exact reason, and that's one of the big pieces that we are hoping for, that partnership with the Whitewater Fire Department. You know, they haven't been able to make some of the meetings, but they're volunteer and they have jobs.
Right.
So I am confident it's not, because I don't want to be a part of it, it's just trying to connect. So we have a meeting with them tomorrow evening. So I don't feel like that, that's why we're partnering with the city for code issues and some of those things, so I would defer to Wally and Cameron on what legally we can do. And again, we're going to be working with the tenants' association as well, so.
James had his hand up first.
He can go if he needs to.
Several times you mentioned ambassadors or somebody walking around funneling people. How does one funnel someone to this location?
Well, you know, more for the people that may be seeking where those people could be, having a layout of the community, you know. What, a lot of things that we had problems with is when we have this influx of people that are not from our community, they don't know where they're at. They don't know where streets are at, they don't know where facilities are at, they don't know where help is at. So ambassadors are kind of helping people, redirect people. What a great way to say, hey, have you eaten at some of our restaurants? You know, if we want to make this a very proactive thing, why are we not promoting where positive things can happen in the community too? It doesn't have to be all about drinking, it can be all about socialization and spending time with people that have all endured some tough schooling opportunities and are just ready for a fresh break. And so some of that is redirecting them to our restaurants, and if they need to know where, if they're bored, or not bored, but you know, where the library is, that could be a positive.
Yeah.
Anything possible.
Right, chief.
It's 2017.
Hope springs a term.
Yes, yes. But I think that that's, you know, and knowing that the armory, if you're looking for somebody that's highly intoxicated, everybody in Whitewater knows where the armory is. Well, these people that are visiting don't. We're going to have cell phone charging kind of station of sorts, that can be a location too. That was another big problem that we had last year. By 2:00 in the morning, everybody's phones were dead. So if you want to be a super sweet ambassador and you want to let them charge their phone, that's an option too. But anything that we can promote hospitality, that, we are a university city by choice. And so that's a good thing, but we don't have to accept mob mentalities and drunken behavior that it does not promote safety, and it certainly doesn't put a good image on our community. And so if we, who live in the community and work in the community, help to support that, that gets us a lot closer to what I think the point is, to let our students enjoy a day of entertainment, but yet citizens require that they do it safely and without destructing property. And I think if we can bring people together to have that unified thought, I think we're getting closer to what the event's purpose to begin with was, what it was about.
And the other comment, we talk in here a lot about talking to the students, talking to landlords. I think a letter ought to come out from the city, basically advising people in some areas of what they can expect, what is going over the line, when you should be called if they see something happening, that type of thing, examples, that type of letter. Really needs to go out to, for instance, on Park Esterly in Franklin, in the area where people are walking through there constantly, and I got tons of complaints from last year. A lot of those people aren't the type of people that may not be looking at things online, may not have any clue again that this is even going to happen.
Chris, I think Cameron mentioned that letter was going to be going out in his comments.
To the residents?
Yes. To everyone, and whether you wanted to partake and needed to.
Or not.
The things you brought up, I think were included in Cameron's.
Yeah, I think everyone would be a better idea than some types of people in certain parts of town, just.
No, everybody, everybody will get it, and we can certainly, to the point that Councilman Grady's making, though, we can certainly include and planned on including in some form or fashion those very, those very things, so we will do that.
That goes along with the special events policy, so, you know, nobody's really actually officially hosting an event.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about is.
But I think if we kind of hold to those similar guidelines, because I think it is helpful for letting everybody know.
Because the vast majority of people last year had no clue what was going on and didn't figure it out until by the end of the day, when it was far too late to understand what was really happening. If you knew what was happening, you may not be as upset about what was happening, if you knew what to look forward to.
Okay. Three short things, I think Councilman Grady would love to offer up his house for phone charging. Just kidding. More than willing. To, if, you know, bring us back to last year, I think we're definitely more prepared this year, so thank you guys for that. Thanks for all the work that we've done with the city and the police department and other stakeholders with that. And thirdly, I do like that, that kind of student ambassadorship. I think with my conversations with students, particularly in student government and Greek life, they're going to be more than willing to kind of be an ambassador to the community and to the university, stuff like that. I've certainly encouraged people who are wishing to peacefully assemble to do so peacefully and in accordance to the law. So hopefully this, I think the numbers will be down this year, especially with Mifflin and some other things that are going on. I know personally, my fraternity, we're going out of town for a formal, so we hope, that's like 160 people that won't be here. But yeah, so hopefully this year turns out to be a good, positive event for the city, and I'm sorry that I will be here to miss the activities.
You can just leave your house open and people could go in and charge.
Big churches, and it wouldn't bother you at all.
I'll be busy that day around town, don't worry, you'll see me out and about. I just similarly wanted to echo that, and I really hope at the end of all of this, that the young people that we're reading about and hearing about in the media are these student ambassadors, because I think they're the ones we should have been talking about last year too, because I think they were there last year, and they didn't get the credit they deserved, because they were overshadowed by some poor decision-making. But I think this year, given that we have planned this ahead of time, I hope that that's the narrative going forward. I hope that student government and Greek students and any other students who are just wanting to do their part are the ones we're talking about at the end of this, because in my experience here, they really are much more than normal. They really are the ones who are more typical of my time at Whitewater, and I really think that they are the ones who should be framing the story and the ones we should be talking about and writing about and hearing about. And I think the work that has been done here is really great, and I'm excited to see what comes of it, so.
I would just echo those thanks of, you know, providing this. I think we talked last time as making sure we're prepared, and just not for this event, but anything else of similar scope, we just have to have that coordination and have a plan in place. And I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that. And to Ms. Gaedel's point, I think later on, we're talking about having a meeting on campus, you know, potentially beginning of May, you know, that would be right after this event, maybe bringing some of those individuals and to recognize them, to thank them, you know, to make them the story, as opposed to potentially, you know, the more disorderly stuff that does sometimes happen with these events. So, you know, hopefully that times out well with what we'll be talking about later, but thank you again for all the hard work you put into this.
Thank you.
Mr. Vinnie, I think you're the last one.
Recalling that public relieving of selves was one of the issues last year, now that we don't have a central location for the start of the party, maybe it's harder to address whether there's a need for porta-potties or signage at the armory that a restroom's available there?
It was discussion, it was discussion at the university meeting, it was discussion at our meeting. I would love if somebody would like to sponsor the porta-potties. I think that would be a really good thing, but what that sponsorship means to come ownership and watching of those items, things like that, in a moment of pause, is the brain's not connecting, perhaps because of alcohol, could cause that to become moved in places we would not want them to be moved or tipped over in a way that we would not be pleased with. So I would, I think that would be a very good thing. The event on North Street, Wisconsin Rides Event, they did have porta-potties, but they obviously were supervised and they left that same day. So if a fraternity or sorority or civic group would like to sponsor some in strategic locations, I think that would be great, but my request would be, if they do so, to please plan on being there, to watch them throughout the night, but it's a problem.
Roughly, how much does it cost to sponsor a porta-potty? Would you know? Any?
I have not rented one.
We can find that out.
They're not cheap. Just curious, I don't know.
Is that just for one?
Thanks for the knowledge, learn something new every day.
Because I'm sure that comes with cleaning and.
Yes, they take it away.
Emptying.
Ooh. Do they have the Whitewater logo?
Any further discussion on this item? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next item we'll move on to is C4, discussion and possible direction regarding council subcommittees and board and commission allocations. This is an item I'd brought up before, we had had some discussion about. I also had emailed this out, I think, Saturday, or Sunday night, Monday morning on this. So after our last meeting, we talked about kind of keeping this on the radar, just to have some more discussion on it. So I took the comments that were provided last time about some of the makeup and some of the things we talked about, and just incorporated them in here, so we could talk about it again and decide if we wanted to do anything with this or not. So that's the handout in front of you, which you should have received earlier with the chance hopefully to review. So before, we had talked about, you know, looking at a way to potentially offload some of the heavy lifting, sometimes that happens right at this body, with a little bit more of a subcommittee structure, but not make it onerous around having to meet every month and adding another layer of meetings and time commitments for both this body, but also elongating processes out. So with that, what I had revised and put into this proposal was that, you know, these committees could exist, but be more a catch-all for when we have things that need a little bit more bake time. So we've had things like the Knox Box ordinance, and we had a special committee that came up around that, but would it make sense to have something that's a little bit more formal that we have there, that's there to have those things referred if necessary? The other thing that these committees could be used for is things that are of kind of annual or routine business that could be seen. So one of the committees suggested was taking the alcohol licensing committee and making it more of a public safety and licensing committee. So that committee already takes up licensing issues when those items come up, it doesn't meet regularly. But looking at that, you know, just having that fleshed out a little bit more, so things like if we needed to have a little bit more vetting or have a subcommittee work on, say, spring splash issues. vetting or have a subcommittee work on, say, spring splash issues, we would have a venue for that. The Knox Box was another example. But also have it still licensing function that it already had. The other two kind of subcommittees that were on the list that we had talked about previously was a Public Works Committee. That committee would kind of be involved in the CIP development. You know, sometimes it gets to council and it seems like, you know, staff have talked about it. But if we at least had some ability for council members that had an interest in that area to kind of get a little bit more into the detail, then by the time it comes to us, maybe some of those items would be a little bit more worked out. Because I think sometimes when it comes to us, it gets a little dry. You know, we could have a little bit more dedicated review and planning around that. Same thing if we had, you know, large capital projects. We want it's, you know, a little bit more review of, say, the wastewater treatment plant, be able to have a venue for that. And then the last committee was the Finance Committee, which we've talked about before, to work for budget, you know, would be part of reviewing the annual budget, you know, potentially looking at the annual audit. And then when we have big bond issues or other financial planning issues that we want to have vetted, have that be a venue for that. The other thing with both the Public Works and the Finance would be, they'd be involved in that recruitment of the, those directors. So the Public Works Director and the Finance Director as well, if those positions ever became vacant. And also on the Public Works side, be involved in if we had any vacancies at the Utility Superintendent level. So there's just a little bit more involvement, a little bit more oversight with those. So those were those three kind of public, or the council committees that we had talked about that many other communities have. But given the input we had last time and the feedback we'd heard was, was kind of, this was the adjustment that I just wanted to bring up for some discussion tonight. And then the last item was obviously our Cable TV Commission. And that's not really a council subcommittee, but it is another board and commission within the community that, you know, may need a little bit refreshing, especially now with our new Public Relations and Communication Manager, with our emphasis on trying to make sure we're communicating effectively with the public. So taking that commission and turning it into what I called a Community Involvement Commission. And this commission would still be public-driven. It wouldn't be basically made up of council members, but we could have some good cross-section of the community. And I just threw out some suggestions for what that membership could look like, having it be nine members, four general community at large, one council rep, representative from Whitewater Student Government, a student representative from Whitewater School District, so we get another perspective on there, someone from the Chamber of Commerce and a seniors in the park number. So that was just trying to provide an example of, you know, trying to pull different areas of our community that are communicated with differently, you know, to the table, and that this committee would be involved in oversight over the public education and government channel, but also looking at how do we coordinate community outreach and engagement activities, you know, if we had an initiative like the wastewater treatment plant, you know, having that group give us feedback on how do we better, or how do we take a project and really make sure that we're, you're reaching everybody. And then also work on looking at a, creating a comprehensive community engagement plan that I know our Public Relations and Communications Manager's working on, but provide that venue for that as well. So these were just the suggestions. All the other stuff got taken out that we talked about last time. But this was just kind of the next iteration and just see where council's at and where we want to go from here.
Thank you for the work. You obviously put a lot of time and effort into this, and I appreciate that. The Finance Committee, I think, is going to be a real asset, and that was suggested probably 10 years ago by a former council member who just happens to be sitting in the audience tonight in the front row. The Community Involvement Commission, I think, makes sense because it's not just cable TV anymore. It's all about communication and many more aspects. It might be a little specific in your membership. You know, if we don't have a member of School District or Chamber of Commerce or Seniors, if we could allow somebody else to fill that spot, I think that's fine. But otherwise, I think this all looks really good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other council comment, and then if there is public, or Jan, if you want to come up now and talk on the Finance Committee.
I just had some questions about the way it's described with the Public Safety and Licensing, just being sure we're not stepping too much on Police and Fire Commission, because the way it's described does sound somewhat similar to some of those responsibilities in terms of administration of the Police Department. So just.
So what I looked at in other communities that have these was, you know, what is the difference? And maybe that's not clearly fine, but it was really the, you know, the policy stuff. You know, it's not, because that's not what the PFC is there for.
Right.
The PFC is not a policy body. It's a oversight and hiring discipline body. So just looking at what other communities have done with that, it was more policy, and maybe that's not clear. We could always refine that a little bit. But it was mainly meant to be, you know, those issues of public safety, like the Knox Box, spring splash, those kind of things where, or an ordinance, say, we're looking at a change, that could be a venue for that. It's not meant to supplant or replace.
Yeah.
The PFC's responsibility. It was more when we have issues of public safety or, you know, even some code enforcement things could potentially fall under there, is that we would have that venue there. So we could always tighten that up, but it was never meant to supplant that. Jan?
Hi, Jan Bilgan-Craigs, 178 North Park Street. I think it's still there. But I'm here tonight with two comments. One, very happy to see movement towards an approach in this way. I would provide a little bit of guarded encouragement in that way, that we need to be careful that we're not creating more committees and therefore actually limiting the amount of responsibility and opportunities that we have for people in the community to be an active part in self-government, local government, those kinds of things. But I think there are some good things here. Obviously, the idea of the Finance Committee has been around for a while. I think it's a very complex topic. I think anybody in this community who chooses to understand it absolutely can, because it's not outside of anyone's scope, in my opinion. But I think that would be an excellent addition. I do have to say, though, as someone who's completing their tenure with the Police and Fire Commission in May of this year, I'm very concerned about the description that's currently in front of us about the public safety group. I think there may be some opportunity to perhaps have a joint meeting of some kind, but, you know, there are a lot of things that go on in the Police Department that are very much connected to personnel issues, to the resources that the Police Department needs, to all of those other pieces that I, I think it, to use someone's words, I think it kind of been, Stephanie, is that it becomes a bit blurry to me. And I think because of the special identity that the Police and Fire Commission has and the amount of information and education that those commissioners take very seriously to understand the department, I think moving in this direction, as it's outlined here in front of you, is not the way that I would hope that you would choose to go. I think there are some very complicated issues that, of course, are very much understandable, but I don't want our Police Department to have three people, three groups of people that they're responsible to. Not because they can't handle reporting to three entities or being given direction by three entities, is that it also allows, we are currently not in this situation with the leadership that we have in our Police Department, the very collaborative and very transparent leadership that we have. However, if that weren't the case in the future, that person could play those three entities against one another to get what they want. And I would hope that we would never make that error in hiring. But it's a significant concern, especially in the area of governance and the area of managing the people who look to the City Council and look to the Police and Fire Commission for protection of themselves and their employment. So I would just very much encourage you not to pursue this unless it's very clear or involve at least two members of the Police and Fire Commission to be part of this other commission or other, pardon me, committee. So there's some continuity and not to expect that the council representative on the Police and Fire Commission serve on this committee as well and be that one person with all that information across the three bodies that are telling the Police Department what they should and should have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Any other comments by council? Mr. Vinnie, if I say.
I appreciate the work you've put into this also. And I hear the concern there on the public safety area. I think it would be helpful to get some input from other communities where you've perhaps seen such a committee and see how it shakes down compared with the PFC. Otherwise, my only concern would be with respect to that Community Involvement Commission. Right now, you don't actually reference the cable TV channel at all in the purpose, and I think that still needs to be a significant part of such a commission's responsibilities.
That language can be put back in there. Any other comments?
Just one more thing under that same description. For the membership of that committee, you had written UW-Whitewater Student Government Representative. I love WSG, but it's actually a really tiny representative of the whole university. It might be kind of a lot to tell them they have, someone from that group has to be on this committee. So, I mean, we might want to just say someone from UW-Whitewater, ask them first, but then similarly to what Councilman Allen had said as well, like having it just available for someone from UW-Whitewater, just in case it can't be filled at some point.
Yeah, because we could use example, you know, here's the membership, but we want to advertise, we want to recruit actively from these kind of, we want a good cross-section of the community.
We'd like student government, but if we could get a student.
Somebody maybe that's active in Greek life or in a student or a larger student org.
In TV.
Yeah.
So if we drop the Public Safety and Licensing now and just potentially work on that later or have some further discussion on that, are the other two, so the question I had is, do we want WALL-E to draft any ordinances changing any of, you know, establishing any of these or changing the cable TV? So that's kind of where I wanted to have that discussion tonight, so WALL-E could potentially start. So if we were able to get something on the agenda for next time, we could adopt it before the next council takes office, and then we could then operate under this change if there were.
Well, and I would say, I actually do like some of the things. Like, I like the idea that there's a place for a discussion about spring splash. I don't like the line about the administration of the Police Department. Like, it's not the entire idea of adding some things to the Alcohol Licensing Committee.
I think.
It's just, I think the way it's worded is a problem. So I think until we have a tighter description that doesn't have crossover, or as Jan had mentioned, you know, working something out, I'm not comfortable with it where it is. I don't have major issues with the idea that that committee could be changed to incorporate some other things. I'm just not comfortable with it as it is.
So if we hold that off right now.
But the other things here, I think, are great, and I don't have issues.
I don't know. I was personally a fan of the proposal. I, when I saw that, I'd even really, that's kind of like a little bit of, a little bit of the pie to me. I was more thinking about the policies on knockbox revisions, all that kind of stuff. So, but I didn't really see that step over, but I could see where I guess that argument could be made. But I personally liked the, you know, that somewhere to hammer out some of these policies before they get up to council would be good.
So if we were to have WALL-E draft these up, we could always hold the public safety, you know, try to clean up the language between now and then.
Yeah, that's fine.
Communicate with Jan and work with Lisa, just to make sure and compare within the next two weeks. Have something on the agenda if we choose that it's still not, that language isn't great. We could always set that one aside. But have WALL-E work on all of them and then, you know, just clean up the public safety one between now and then. And if it's not ready, we could just hold it off and do the remainder of it.
This may sound like a silly question, but why is this an ordinance? This is a policy. We don't have to have WALL-E draft anything, I wouldn't think. All we're doing is we're creating subcommittees that are going to be providing recommendations to the full council.
Traditionally, at least with the cable TV, that will have to be an ordinance.
It is an ordinance.
Okay, that one maybe, but the other ones.
But most of the ones are codified.
The Alcohol Licensing Committee is a.
Any standing committee?
Is codified.
Standing committee usually are codified in ordinance. I mean, I guess you could do it with bylaws if you had those, but we usually use our Chapter Two, which is where we're all, all our organizational, city organizational pieces are, is, that's where they are. So usually, our trend has been to do it via ordinance, alcohol licensing being a good example, which is clearly codified in ordinance.
We generally have done it by ordinance, but Chris is right, you can do it by resolution or policy as well. So whatever your desire is.
And the other question I've kind of got is, what responsibilities, what are these people, what are these groups actually going to be able to do? I mean, if, for instance, you're talking about example of items under the Finance Committee, they're going to review annual audit, review bonds. Those aren't things that normally come before us very often anyway. Is it just helping, I mean?
The audit comes before us every year.
Yeah, the audit does. But I'm just saying, in general, a lot of these finance things or the Public Works type things ultimately come before us, but at the same time, what is that group actually going to be doing?
I see them as advisory committees to the council.
I think they'll be really helpful.
So they're advising the full council?
Yeah, it's just like alcohol licensing. We have a meeting where we hear, and we make a recommendation to this full body, but we can work out some of the particulars. We hear, you know, at the alcohol licensing, we hear all the testimony, you know, that doesn't get played out at council. We've entrusted that group to do the legwork and then make a full recommendation.
I think that's sort of the idea, is that some of us would be, would take the time to have all of the information so that we wouldn't have to have a three-hour council meeting. And I'll be honest, I think sometimes, especially with financial things, they get pushed through these meetings because we don't want to sit here for four hours. You know, I think, you know, we don't always take as much time as we could on financial-type things that, you know, if we at least had an advisory-type committee who would take the time in a separate meeting on a different night to adequately review them, I think would be good for the sake of the council. I would be more comfortable knowing that a group of three of my peers or myself and two others took the time to do that.
Yeah, I think they're good. I think it should be codified. I mean, I think we should move on, really.
Is there any other objection? Otherwise, we can, if we're all good with at least starting that, we can have WALL-E drafted up and we can have something actionable. Whether, we can work with WALL-E in terms of what's the best vehicle, whether it be an ordinance or resolution, but.
I agree that we should leave out public safety for the time being, but let's change the community involvement to cable, or community involvement and cable TV and put something in there about.
Get it in there, yeah.
Yep.
I had that on the list.
But there's no makeup of the boards or these committees for any of these other groups. You're very specific in membership and the community involvement. Is that same for all of them?
No, the other, the Public Works were three members, council only. So it'd be similar to alcohol licensing.
These are just council committees.
Yeah, it would just be made up of council members, similar to alcohol licensing. The other one was specific, like we've done with Park and Rec and.
So here's my question. Will there be an expectation of council members to serve on at least one of these? I mean.
Three, six.
I guess that's my question, is.
Seven.
We all are theoretically.
There's three of them.
There are three.
We've had, sometimes where council members have gotten.
There are some council members who certainly, outside of here, are serving in many, many more capacities, and oftentimes that is by choice. But I guess I'm just wondering, you know, what is the expectation?
You've already got cable, so you're really adding two.
But I think in terms of the two, we have alcohol licensing and we have the other two. We have council members that have not been a citizen or a council rep to any committees. I think that's happened once or twice in my tenure on here. But I think if you have an interest on here, I mean, and depending on the time, you know, we might have a member on both, or on two of them, or we might have a member just on one, or maybe a member decides, let the rest of you figure it out and I'll just sit back and wait. We're not mandating all, any of that. I just, do you think we should?
Sometimes I do.
That's really my only concern. You've added essentially 10 positions.
Well, alcohol licensing is already, I mean.
We're adding six.
Okay, seven positions.
Six, because cable TV already has a council rep on it. So we're adding.
But Public Works is three. You've got three more on Finance. That's six right there.
Yep, that's it.
And the other, yeah, you said the other two.
Yeah, the cable TV already has one.
The Finance Committee is 100% needed.
Yeah. I'm not saying they aren't needed. I'm just, to her point.
There are seven of us and six new jobs.
You're asking people to put in a lot more, could be putting in a lot more time, because you don't know really, the Public Works Committee, they may meet quite often.
Well, and we just don't know right now. I mean, you know, other councils have this setup, but we have, at a previous meeting, talked about maybe reducing the other council rep positions that we have out there, and that didn't go over real well with those board and commissions that we would potentially be taking it off. So, I mean, we could look at all of our committees, as we've done in the past, but.
And I am not complaining about the work we're doing. I was simply asking what the expectation was going to be.
Sure, I was just going to, to these comments. I understand, and perhaps for the first little while, there would
there would be, it would seem like more meetings, but if done effectively, there would not really be an addition of time net at the end, if you measure how much it would, it could streamline other meetings. And I, I mean, back up, this is clearly, Council President Singer's brought this up, and this is his work, but I know that, from my perspective, in managing, managing the day-to-day operations and some of the times when staff, whether it be out of their own current level of experience or not, or other reasons, might not foresee a concern that, that could be easily seen or brought up by, by a council member. So, having those things vetted before we come here makes it, makes this meeting a lot, run a lot more smoothly. It makes it less stressful for any staff or consultants that need to come, because we kind of already are on the same page. And it helps to perpetuate, or not perpetuate, but distribute or, or put out into the community, at least by way of those three council members, information about what the project is and what's going on. So, I think in general, just my own experience talking with other city managers and administrators, ultimately, if these, if these work effectively, the amount of time spent in meetings at the council level on our first and third Tuesday nights would be reduced.
True, but there's still the coordination of more meetings.
Yes.
People's schedules and city staff and whatnot.
Just wanted to make sure it was clear, if this works out, this meeting won't be, or a lot of that time will be shortened.
Alright, so we'll have Wally draft something up and then have a discussion on adoption next time, and if we have any changes, we could...
And you'd like the Police one as well, right, all of them, or...
Why don't you do it and then we can, I'll, Jan, I'll get in touch with you.
I'll have it drafted, I won't be at the next meeting, but I'll have it drafted.
Is there any interest on council to, you know, Finance Committee, Public Works, does it have to be three members of council?
I think we had that discussion earlier, you know, could we make it with community members as well, which we could, but the concern was we already have trouble getting community members to apply for the boards and commissions we have. You know, if we add more, is that going to be, are we going to get, but there's nothing saying it has to be council, won't we? I think even in Jan's, I looked, their Alcohol Licensing Committee is made up of community members plus some council reps, so. So, we could talk about that next time on the makeup of it, because Wally can draft it, we can always insert what the makeup is and change that once it's an ordinance form, if you want to think about it a little more before the next meeting. Alright, so next item, or our last regularly scheduled item, is C5, Discussion Regarding the Possibility of Holding a Future Council Meeting on the UW-Whitewater Campus, Possible Direction.
I meant to actually do follow-up work on this and have been incredibly sick, I'm still incredibly sick, so I have not been able to really do any follow-up work on this myself, so I apologize to the world.
I was just going to say, since our, since Jan Bilgan is here as well, we've had a conversation today that...
Oh, good, I saw that you were ill.
I'm very ill, I have not eaten in three days.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Jan Bilgan, 800 West Main.
You do kind of live.
So, when I, when I was looking at the council agenda, as I do often, I saw this item on the agenda, so I took the liberty of trying to check availability for the remaining of the council dates that you might have between now and the 5th of May. As much as we as an institution would love to host you and have you on campus, there's not really a facility that's available without really having to move students and their regularly scheduled meetings out of the spaces that would be most convenient. However, I did speak with the university reservationist and the facilities coordinator in the university center.
Do you know that person?
I talked to my husband during work hours. Actually, we're happy if we can identify a time in the fall and the spring where you would like absolutely to have a meeting on campus, we'll reserve that space now and would be happy to do that moving forward, but the spring looks a bit doubtful, to be honest, in a way that would make it easy for all of you to be there, obviously, other residents, and then of course, unnecessary taping and streaming that we need to happen and meet the ordinance requirements as well.
Well, thank you, Jan. So, if we could come to a future meeting to talk about, you know, potentially just getting it on the calendar and having...
Like a repeated date, yeah.
Right after the semester starts maybe, and then right before the end.
Happy to do that.
Question I've got, do you want us to just, I mean, staff can work with Jan and with the facilities folks at the university and come up with some proposed dates, is that, or do you want to just wait to have the discussion?
I don't particularly care when it is, as long as it happens.
I just want to make sure, the sooner we get it on the calendar, the safer we are at having it.
Staff will take care of it, it sounds like.
I would personally rather it was in the fall rather than the spring, just to be able to get the students, the new students more and roll into the city as part of that meeting.
I'd like us to be a little bit flexible too, I wouldn't want to be taking up a space that is well-deserved and needed by a student group who pays for that facility.
Two of us pay for it.
Alright, is there any further discussion on this item? Otherwise, we'll move to council and request for future agenda items, Mr. Langness, Mr. Gray.
No.
Yes, one, I'd like us to look at our ordinances and maybe other city ordinances in university cities and the amount of parking that is required for multi-unit buildings. You know, more and more people drive today than before, where in the past, maybe not every student brought a car to the university, but I think most do now, so we might need to revisit that a little bit. Second, I'd like an update on the K-9 recruiting and whether or not the second K-9 will be just a drug-sniffing dog or more than that, as we had requested and talked about.
I have anything?
I'm good.
Alright, is there motion adjourned?
Still moved.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.